Call this meeting to order at 6 o'clock. If folks could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Less, less.
Yeah.
Names. Great.
Correct. So before we, well, as we get started, recently, two former employees of Hampton Academy, longtime employees, passed away. Andrea, you want to talk about them?
Our former librarian, Ginger Davis, who'd been with us for many, many years, and our former language arts teacher, Jim Cooper. Many, many people I know remember and have.
They can't hear you.
Oh, sorry. So it was Ginger Davis, who's our former librarian for a long, long time, and Jim Cooper, former language arts teacher. And I know many kids will remember Jim Cooper. And one of the things about Jim Cooper was...
Hold on to your hats for this one.
In like 35 years here, never missed a day. He had perfect attendance. Never missed a day of school. So...
So perhaps we could have a brief moment of silence? Thank you. Okay. The ASCD overview from the Windy City.
Okay. I'm going to join you up. Amber's not ready to go?
Here we are. So back March 18th through the 21st, I had the pleasure of bringing a team to the annual conference. And it was the first time it was in person in a couple of years. And we went as a team. And these are all on our Language Arts Committee. And we specifically went to recharge, reconnect, and to think about our initiatives that we have here in district. And I can tell you, it was just a fantastic opportunity to get a sense of what's happening in our nation. It's also exciting to see what's going on. We had the opportunity to just really take in just first-rate professional development. The keynote speakers were incredible. The sessions were informative. And it was just quite an opportunity. And we just wanted to share some of the highlights of our trip. Okay. So I'm going to talk about the keynotes. And then these lovely ladies are going to talk about some of the breakout sessions. So Weston Kirshnik was the first keynote. And he's an author, an ASCD author. And his keynote was titled, "The Educator's Atlas: Your Roadmap to Joyful, Engaging, and Successful Classrooms." He says curiosity is a prerequisite to engagement. And kids bring it every day, so let's feed on it. He also said that engagement is formulaic, meaning that there's a formula, and it doesn't just happen overnight and by itself. Carolyn Tomlinson spoke to us during our lunch break, or over lunch, while we ate lunch. She's an educator, been in the classroom for over 50 years. She's an author. And she wants us to listen to what the kids are saying. And she gave us some guidance from what the students have been saying to her. She said student voice is important. And how do we ensure that every child feels engaged? So you can see a pattern arising here. Liz Dozier, she was a dynamic speaker. She's from Chicago Public Schools, high school principal, and founder and CEO of Chicago Behind. She told us that 1 million educators left education last year, that we need to take care of ourselves. And as educators, our North Star should be to ensure all young people have the opportunity to live a free and full life. Then she said, "That might be out of reach. And for some students, that's why we need to be willing to challenge the institutions and the systems that stand in the way of justice, equity, and freedom for all young people. One positive adult in a student's life will shift their mindset and help their resilience." Couple more people. We listened to Daniel Lerner. He's a speaker and author, a strength-based performance coach and instructor. He teaches one of the most popular undergrad courses in New York University, the Science of Happiness. His expertise in positive psychology helps people live thriving, successful lives. He said, "Instead of talking about PTSD from the pandemic, he wants us to think about PTG, post-traumatic growth." So can we find this from the pandemic? Post-traumatic growth. Our last keynote was Miguel Cordon. He is the U.S. Secretary of Education. He reminded us that we should work smarter, not harder, and remember that why we all went into this profession. While we all know it's important to take care of the whole student, he was really key about taking care of the whole teacher. Thank you.
Hi. Hi. Today, I just wanted to talk about a couple of the sessions that I got to go to that had some interesting points to them. The first one was one on executive functioning, the key to being a proficient reader. So it talked about needing all these different skills to be a proficient reader. Memory, self-monitoring, focus and attention, impulse control, planning and organization, and problem solving. And another session that I went to was on growth mindsets. And the key point I pulled out of that was, talked about how if kids get 30 minutes of exercise a day, they're 50% more likely to have a growth mindset that day. So I thought that was a pretty interesting point. Thank you.
Can you say your name and what you do?
I'm Kirsten Burner, the reading specialist at Hampton Academy. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Trish Crowley. I'm the reading target assist teacher at Marston School. So I went to many wonderful sessions. Thank you guys so much for sending us and supporting this great professional development. The one I chose to focus on is the essentials. It was called 25 Words Your Students Must Know. And the reason I chose this one is due to our focus right now on the ELA curriculum. So this one was really interesting. It was based on the idea that researchers have looked at assessments, the Common Core, state standards throughout the entire United States. And they found that 85% of achievement test scores are based on the vocabulary of those standards. And the essential words are the specific tasks that students have to do within those questions. And so the whole premise of these 25 words, "Students Must Know," is that you can't answer a question if you don't understand what the question is asking of you. So it was a neat idea. So they start with this foundational 11. And these are the 11 words that are found in standards starting at kindergarten level. And they're words like compare, contrast, describe, explain. Sorry, I'm short. I'm going to pull this down. Then it moves on from there to the next nine words, called the Necessary Nine. And these are the words for reading comprehension, writing assessments, and life beyond school. The words like develop, evidence, infer, summarize. And then those lead to the ultimate five, which are the process words that you have to have the foundational 11, the Necessary Nine. And when you put those together, then you can do things like analyze, evaluate, and persuade. And this was just a really informative session. And it goes along with that idea of teaching smarter, not harder. You know, focus, prioritize. And if we spend our time really focusing on these 25 words versus the thousands of words that kids see in a grade level, we can really get more bang for our buck. So I'm going to pass this to Trish Cholphy.
Hi, I'm Tricia Cholphy. I'm the reading specialist at Marston. Can you hear me okay? Should I try it again? Tricia Cholphy, the reading specialist at Marston. Thanks for having us. And just to reiterate, Trish said, "Thank you for sending us. It was a great time, just to get away and get refreshed and come back with some new ideas." I went to the Minimalist Teacher Journey, because this is something I strive to be. And this year, looking at students, you know, we went through COVID and the students... Oh, sorry. Sorry. Did I go all the way back to the beginning? Said, "Thank you." The reason I chose this one Minimalist Teacher is, one, I'm trying to become one. And looking at students this year after COVID, we, particularly with third graders, they missed a lot at K-12. So when you have students in front of you, you're really grappling with how do I teach the new skills while also simultaneously filling in the old skills that they might have missed? And I liked what she said. She said, "First, you're rethinking what you're already doing. We're already doing some really great things. We just have to kind of tweak them." She had this triple P framework. The purpose is obviously always the students. Then we're looking at our priorities. Really, we do this with power standards. We have, there's so many skills kids need. We really need to zero in on what are the most important skills they need. And then pare it down. Instead of waiting to the end of a trimester to do assessments, constantly do those assessments. Make them smaller, make a single point that you're looking for instead of a whole thing. And we also, we all have binders in front of us and curriculum maps, but the kids have to be the most important thing. And whatever that binder says, it's irrelevant if you're not looking at the students in front of you and really focusing on them. So it was very student-centered. I liked this little thing on the bottom. She actually had us use it for teaching, but you could even do it anywhere you want to prioritize. You take a list of things you need to get done. Is it urgent, important, not so urgent? You kind of rate them. And then when you're done, you kind of see like, oh, these are the things I need to get done today, and everything else can wait. Priority rises to the top. So I think, I thought it was a nice workshop to really hone in, particularly this year, on what is important, because so much is important. Thanks.
It was just a fantastic opportunity. And as we, throughout the weekend, we spent lots of time together, having our meals together, processing together. Yes, we had a little time before and after. But we really are even working through lunches with Carol Tomlinson speaking on children's voice and differentiation. It was really a packed day. You began the day at 8:00 in the morning, and you ended it late at night. Because what happened was, a lot of times, people would want to meet up with you afterwards, like Discovery Ed, we met with in the evening. And it was, of course, it was a dinner, but it was all about to talk about some of the products. And New Hampshire is a recipient of Discovery Ed. The commissioner did purchase that for all New Hampshire districts. So they were really great about meeting with us and talking with us, but also taking care of us in some ways, right? They had us for dinner, which was really nice. But just a great opportunity. So what are the key takeaways? And these are the things that we talked about as we move on. It's important to go and to get a larger landscape of what's happening in our country. But it's about what do we come back? And what's most important for us to do as a district? And we know that we continue to work on language arts as a district. And we are looking at how do we continue to engage our students in learning? I think we heard that many times. All about relationships in terms of developing those rich relationships and thinking about student voice. Really important. Also, not forgetting to take care of our staff, right? The staff voice is important as well, the parents' voice. So making sure that we're listening. But those rich relationships are important. And then, of course, being results-focused. What do we here for? We're here for our students. We're here for their achievement. And we are working towards that every single day. We always remember that our staff is central to student progress. We talked a lot about mental health and well-being. That was a big focus of this conference. And how do we support our staff so that they're better equipped to take care of our students? Really important. And finding the balance. If you look at Edweek this week, it talks about teacher satisfaction, which is really at an abysmal rate. Saying that less than 30% of all teachers are finding joy and satisfaction in the work, which is really disheartening to hear. So again, remembering our why. Why did we choose this profession? Do we bring the love for it every single day? And remembering that we must find balance in our lives. And finally, thinking about all of our students and making sure that every student has access. So thinking about the equity piece. Next slide, Amber. There is a link, and we just want to share that with you just a little bit of, get a sense, so you can get a sense of this conference. They put this together at the end, and they sent it to us just as a thank you for attending. And it'll give you a sense of how big it is. Thousands of people go to this.
ASCD is back. The conference that refreshes educators. ASCD is back.
I come to this conference because I love learning. I think there's a lot of really good choices here. The content is always very up-to-date and relevant.
ASCD is on the forefront of all the critical issues when it comes to education.
Being able to network and getting back into that collaborative effort, I'm just excited.
We love to learn from one another and get ideas from one another.
I can't thank ASCD enough. I feel like I'm going home with invaluable information.
Being back in person feels great.
I am recharged and reconnected.
ASCD rocks!
This is my first time here at the ASCD conference. It's been rejuvenating.
We feel reconnected and recharged.
I am recharged and I am reconnected.
And just a little other information. ASCD stands for the Association of Supervision and Curriculum Development. It is the largest research-based educational organization in the United States and nation. It only rivals to AERA, which is the American Educational Research Association. So all of the research does come out of ASCD. So we know when we're going to an ASCD conference, what we're learning is all based on best practice. It has been research-based. So we just feel like it's the gold standard for professional development. And I couldn't have picked a better group to go with. They were just absolutely up and ready every day with a positive smile on their face. And just overall, we went on a weekend. It was a Friday through Monday. And they just, from sunup to sundown, worked hard to really take in everything that we could. So just a big thank you for allowing and supporting this great professional development opportunity. Just wanted to share some highlights. So thank you. Questions, comments?
Anyone have any questions? I've been to those conferences many times. And it is a lot of work. Doesn't matter where they have it. I've been to some in Nashville. I've been to some in Florida, Orlando. It's still a lot of work. So thank you. Thank you. And don't feel like you have to stay.
That was our, that's our language arts reps, too.
Yes, yes. Okay. Board member updates? Frank, Budget Committee?
There was no Budget Committee meeting last month. There will be one this month.
Okay. Building facilities? Andrea? Can you speak into the microphone, please?
Nothing right now.
Okay. Comcast, Mr. DeLuca? No?
It's gone.
That's gone. Well, it's on my agenda. Okay.
Taken off. That was concluded close to a year ago.
Okay. Curriculum? Wendy? Andrea?
Well, they've finished, finishing work with Mike Anderson on integrating socio-emotional learning skills into each curriculum area. Although, as I said before, it's already and always has been done, but just not with a deliberate and mindful approach to it. And demonstrated success is going to finish up this month. And that's the continued work of this LA group on curriculum maps, scope, sequence, and alignment. So that's what's happening there.
Okay. School Boards Association? I have a question for all of you. Do you folks receive emails from the School Boards Association? For example, two came within the past few days. One was on outdated policies.
Yes.
You got that?
Yep.
And the other one was on...
Legislative update?
Legislative update. You guys are getting those, right? Because if you weren't, I was going to forward them to you. And that's all I had, just to make sure that you got those. Speaking of policies?
We're meeting in the last Monday in May.
Yes, so no meeting since, so no updates.
Okay, all right.
But Dr. DeSylvanapton's going to go over the policies from last month that have to do with special ed laws and changes, right? So we'll do that tonight. Yep.
Okay, go.
Yep.
Professional development? Ginny?
These people pack a lot into an hour. Tomorrow's meeting, I thought was really interesting. The parents are going to have their last session on hugging a porcupine, whatever that may be. But that's their, they're, they're going to be doing work, finishing up work on that. They're also going to work, our regular teachers are going to be working on groupings for next year. And they're going to be talking about that. And the academy's going to start their work on advisories. Then in June, they're moving on to work more on the language arts curriculum, because that's going to be the focus for the next year, this year and the following year. And they're not going to start math until 2023. All in all, they're all keeping busy. They've all got some great ideas. And they all seem to be going forward. So it's great.
Any questions for Ginny? Okay. Wendy, PTA?
Like Jenny, I have a lot. Okay. So the calendar fundraiser for May is in progress. You can still buy your calendars over the PTA website. There are over $6,000 in prizes that are available. We want to give thanks to everybody who went to the Cuatro de Mayo fundraiser at the Brook. It was a great night. And last but not least, they have a big event coming up called Party on Park, which is June 4 at 5:00 p.m. at Tuck Field. They will have food trucks, live music, entertainment. We want families to bring a blanket or chairs. Tickets are on sale now. You can visit the PTA's Facebook page for details on how to purchase tickets. They are $5 a person or $20 for a family of five or larger.
Excuse me, Wendy. What was the date?
June 4 at 5:00 p.m. at Tuck Field.
Okay, what day of the week is that?
Saturday. Saturday.
Saturday, okay.
Yep. Okay, and rain day to Sunday. I hear from the peanut gallery.
Okay. Any questions for Wendy? Okay. Scheduling, anything, Frank?
Wait, do you want to do... There was a meeting on May 2.
Oh, you had more? Go ahead, Frank.
There was a meeting on May 2 that I was unable to attend. Did you go? No. Oh, okay. But did they still have that meeting? Because I understand Ms. Hughes is out sick. So they still had that meeting? Yeah. Okay. So I missed that. I was on the phone.
We are going to put it on the agenda for next month so that they can...
It's on Monday?
It's on the, going to be on the agenda for the school board for next month, just so that you could get a sense of it. Yeah.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, Wendy, you weren't finished.
No, no, we were just going to do rec. You skipped rec.
Oh.
That's all.
Okay. Yes, I did. I'm sorry.
So I actually wasn't able to make the last meeting because I was away for spring break. But I talked to Renee. He said the new building foundation for the new building over at Tuck is almost completed. He wanted to let everybody know there are still some spots available for various summer camps, including Rec at the Rim, which is what we formerly called Tuck Camp. There are some weeks still available. And there are still some spots in coding camp and journalism camp. And you can sign up for those at the Rec website. Also, they are still looking for a camp director for the Rec at the Rim camp. So you can call the Rec office for details. But it does look like they've gotten the counselor spots all filled, which is great.
We put, just about the Rec director. I know that we put something in our Friday newsletter last week. Renee did reach out to me. And Ms. Lassard, I think you shared with me that we may have found somebody. So which is, fingers crossed. So that's, we're hoping that we're getting what we need for the staffing. I know that there's been some concerns about that. So we'll keep our fingers crossed. And hopefully, that's going to hold to be true.
Okay. Steering Committee? Frank? Nothing? Master Plan, anything?
The only thing is, we did have a meeting last month. But that was only in regards to verbiage, correct usage of certain words, change certain words regarding the master plan. Other than that, there's nothing happening until probably late this summer.
Okay. And Wellness Committee?
Yeah. Some of, the reps from each school had gone over some of the things that they had done during the school year. And then we talked quite a bit about the, hopefully, August 29th, having, bringing back the farmer's market and trying to find vendors and people that are, you know, willing to come and do some of their healthy, fun kind of booths that they have, not only for teachers on that first day, but also keep it open for members of the public that would like to come as well. So that's it.
Okay. Public comment on agenda items?
And a recommendation. Would it be possible to look at public comment on agenda items, move it to the top? So we give people, if they decide to come in to talk about it, an opportunity to discuss it early in the program rather than mid-program?
How about if we put it right before the Board Member Updates?
That would be great.
Okay. Can you tell Kathy?
I can do that, yes.
Principals Reports, Mr. Lannan?
Good evening, everyone.
Hello. Just a couple of updates. You had a chance to look at my board report and my newsletter. First of all, I want to thank the PTA for a fabulous job that they did for Teacher Appreciation Week. It was amazing all that they did for us at the school. And many thanks to them. Also, Dr. Costa and the SAU office, they donated some food on one other day, some bagels they brought over. So much appreciation for that as well. So again, all of you that participated in that teacher appreciation, many thanks. Just a couple of highlights on the report. You know, we talked a lot about the first six weeks of school, but now we're in the last six weeks of school. The first six weeks is all about getting comfortable The first six weeks is all about getting comfortable and getting adjusted. The last six weeks is about reflection and doing end-of-the-year assessments and taking that data and making sure that we've made, uh, projected growth. And if we haven't made growth, well, how do we handle that? And, uh, how do we move forward into the next school year? So we're busy looking at data right now. We're also getting ready in the last six weeks, uh, with the transition process, um, within the building, transitioning from grade to grade as also, as well as transitioning second-grade students to Marston School. Uh, Mr. Sadler and myself have been in constant communication about that, and we have dates in place to have, uh, that transition go as smoothly as possible. Uh, we do have a night event planned for grade two, uh, folks, uh, going on May 31st, so we're excited about that night event as part of the transition. Uh, we continue to have, um, registrations for kindergarten. Uh, we're up to 80, uh, not a number I'm highly excited about, but we're getting there. We're slowly getting there. The goal is to get to 100, is what I'm trying to do, but we're about 80 right now, uh, students registered. Uh, we have registration dates, uh, in place, um, for the month of May, three, uh, three registration dates, and we'll have a June appointment as well. So those are all filled, and we're excited, and we'll add more. Hopefully, we'll need to add some more. Uh, we had a coffee chat. Mrs. Haywood and I had a coffee chat with some parents, uh, this month. That went very well. We got some nice feedback from parents how the year went, and we made some, uh, thoughts and notes on moving forward into next year. And, um, I did write in my report that, uh, I don't have to do any professional hiring, staff hiring. But of course, after I turn in my board report to you, I believe you have a hand, um, you have a note of a, a resignation that we'll talk about later, uh, this evening. So I do have to get on the stick and get ready to start hiring Mrs. Haywood and I, so. Here's where we are right now. Any questions? Thank you. Have a great night, everyone.
Thank you. Mr. Sadler?
Hello.
How are you?
I'm great. Thank you very much for asking. Um, just a couple of updates along with the board report that you have in my newsletter, um, echoing Tim. You know, I've always felt in the nine or so years I've been here how supportive this community is. The PTA really outdid themselves this week. You know, combine that with some school-based efforts and some district-wide efforts. I thought it was a fantastic way to, um, you know, honor and recognize all the hard work that our staff does all the time, and, you know, this year, last year, more than ever. So, um, I just appreciate it, and a thank you to the PTA and to all of our parents out there. Tomorrow, we have Walk to School Day. We're excited. We haven't done this in a few years now. Um, we got semi-rained out last week, so we'll meet at the Hampton Academy parking lot right out there around 8 o'clock, and then around 8:10, 8:15 or so, we start the journey back towards, uh, Marston, and I know Center will also be participating. So, um, that's open to students and parents, and it's just a great community event. It's part of our Safe First to School program we used to operate, and, um, just a way to encourage kids to not only lead an active and healthy lifestyle, but also start to show them that, you know, you can get together with your friends in your neighborhood and do walking school buses with one or two adults and, um, you know, cut down on the traffic and stuff. As Mr. Lannan said, we're having Two-Three Information Night on May 31st to Tuesday evening from 6:00 to 7:00. It is for parents and students of second graders coming up to third. Um, that day, we'll have Step Up Day where the second graders will actually come over and visit Marston School and, um, hear a little bit from the teachers and tour around the building a little bit. But that evening, it's really, um, the opening, probably 20 or 30 minutes of information. Um, you'll get the chance to meet the third-grade teachers, myself, um, you know, Mrs. Hoppa, the reading specialist, the nurse, the school counselor, and then the last half hour is just an open, um, exploration of the building. So it gives students just a chance to kinda see the school another time before they make that transition over next year. And then, um, just for parents to keep an eye out on our calendar and Facebook and our website, we have a lot of field trips and, um, really awesome activities going on this month that, again, we haven't done in a few years. So fourth grade's going to Strawberry Bank. They, um, get a free trip to Bollarama through, um, a phys ed program that we do with them. Um, fifth grade will be going to Odeon Point in the Seco Science Center, and third grade will do some of their local field trips, their trolley tour, um, a visit over to the Tuck Museum and the, you know, the old schoolhouse and stuff. So a lot of really good things happening. We're excited to get parents back in the building and, um, you know, do some of these community-wide events. Questions?
Any questions for Nathan? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Hawkins from Hampton Academy?
Good evening.
How are you?
I'm doing great. Um, there's a lot, lot going on, uh, with the end of the year. Um, but I would like to start off by saying thank you to the, the PTA. Uh, wonderful, wonderful, uh, just, you know, bringing everything in for showing appreciation. Um, I had to actually, Dr. Costa brought over a whole bunch of bagels, and I brought some home to my family, and they're kinda snobby. And they were like, "Where did you get these?" And I had to text her and find out where, where she actually got them. So I greatly appreciated, um, and, you know, I didn't have to buy dinner that night, so it was kinda nice. Um, we are also looking into, uh, we're gonna be having our Memorial Day Assembly. We haven't had that for a few years. Uh, looking forward to the kids participating and having people come over, um, to celebrate. Uh, we're gonna be having our Quebec trip, leaving, uh, and, uh, traveling to, you know, across the Canadian border, which we haven't been, no one's been able to do for quite a while, so. Um, we have, uh, our Step Up Night on, uh, the 26th for parents, uh, 4th to, uh, I'm sorry, 5th to 6th. And then, um, we'll also be doing, uh, a Step Up Day for fifth graders to come over on the 2nd of June. So just, uh, a whole bunch of different things going on, so.
Any questions for Mr. Hawkins?
No, but while I have you and the other principals, I just wanna say Happy Nurses Day to all of our nurses tomorrow. They do a fabulous job, and it's not easy during these stressful times, but they really have, and I know this is, um, Mrs. Brand's last one with us, so Happy Nurses Day to all of our nurses.
We'll make it memorable for her. Yeah.
I did actually have a quick question. Um, with the Quebec trip, I know I've seen a lot of parents asking about the potential for anything, particularly for the eighth graders here at the end of the year. It's getting to be the end of the year. I don't know that we have time to do anything, but is there anything sort of special planned? A day trip or anything like that for the eighth graders?
Yeah, they're, they're actually, um, they've scheduled a day, uh, it's called Block Party up in Hooks at New Hampshire. Uh, it has, uh, a climbing wall, ropes course, uh, it has laser tag, uh, pizza, and, uh, an arcade. So they're gonna go up with the eighth grade to be able to celebrate up there.
Great. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Napton?
Good evening.
Hi.
Nice to see you again. Um, so you do have my report, and, um, this last month was a, a PD month for me, as you saw. I did the ASCD and the Annual Law Conference, which is always fun for us special educators. Get all kinds of information, keep us out of court. Um, and the numbers are looking very fun. We still have 20 kids in process. It's May. That means we still have 20 kids that we are finishing up our assessments and trying to decide if they are eligible for special education or not. Um, in the meantime, you can see that we've increased by 17 students from the beginning of the year to this time. So special ed numbers are definitely rising. We are keeping up with the rising numbers, and we are still doing what is best for children. Any questions?
Any questions for Dr. Napton, Frank?
Hi, Frank.
Hi, how are you?
I'm great.
Good. Uh, I understand that, uh, your class sizes are gonna dramatically increase next year for Marston? Uh, or is that incorrect? Uh, I'm, I'm looking at, because you got the influx coming in from Center School, based on the numbers you have.
Are you talking about caseloads or, like, class size or special educator caseloads? Um, I wouldn't say a significant increase. They are right, the, at this point, the average caseload in, in Hampton is eight or nine students. So at Marston, they'll have 11 on their caseload, 11 or 12.
11 or 12.
Yep, so not a significant increase, but yes, a little bit of an increase. We do have a, a bundle of students coming up into second grade for sure, and not that many leaving out of fifth.
Okay.
But it's not unreasonable.
And you have three special ed instructors at Marston now?
One next year, yep.
So if we look at approximately the number here, 40, are we looking at probably 14 per?
Well, we'll see at that point where we are.
Yeah.
But yep, that's a possibility.
And versus the academy?
I will have to pull all those, all those numbers, but the academy numbers are right around nine and 10, although, no, that's not true. Some caseload right now are at 15, at Nat, right now. So they will vary. But nothing is unreasonable, and no one will have more than 15.
All right.
And hopefully, no one will have less than 10.
And how's Bonnie Heat's program doing at the academy?
It's doing great. It's doing really wonderful things. Uh, we will be at capacity next year. We've got a couple of part-timers in there. Uh, but the program is absolutely thriving, and so are the students.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
What's preschool looking like, Lois?
Uh...
How many of the 29 referrals and in, in, um...
In process?
Yeah, to be determined.
So I would have to go and look at the specific numbers, but yes, many of them, I would say 30% of those are preschool numbers that we're looking to figure out who fits and who doesn't.
Okay, and we've got enough room with those preschools moving on to kindergarten?
Yes, we have a, a bundle of, an abundance, I might say, of, of students moving from pre-K into kindergarten. So we have space for anyone else who might be identified at this point.
Okay, good.
And the NET program is really, the partner program has been really helpful, and, um, having the ability to have some of our preschool students move into that program at the kindergarten age is really helpful.
Good.
Yep, it's working well.
Any other questions? Thank you, and we'll see you in a bit for policies.
Yes, you will.
Amber Levine, Technology?
So we've been busy with just a few things. Um, we're working on our student information system and getting that up and running. We're in the process of shifting from Power School to Alma. Um, we're also rounding up old technology. Um, we're getting ready to put in our new Promethean boards at Center School once the students leave. Um, so we're recycling old tech, um, and we're also working on subscriptions for next year, seeing what we're using, what we're not using. We had a lot of resources during COVID, um, and so we're just trying to go through and see what we're still using, what things we can get rid of versus what things we really need to support student learning and, and teachers.
Okay, I, are you bringing us under new business, the technology website? You wanna do that now while you're up here?
And Alma, too.
Sure.
And Alma.
So we do have some new changes for next year for technology. So a couple of the big ones are the Promethean boards and the Chrome boxes at Center and Marston School, as well as the Chrome boxes here at Hampton Academy. Those are all new this year. So we really wanna make sure we're supporting, um, teachers in learning about the, all of those devices and how they can use them with students. So we're gonna be offering ongoing training throughout next school year, as well as, um, Dave, Nick, and I in the tech department put together some Google slideshows of presentations and resources for teachers. If they would like to do PD hours over the summer, it's an option. If not, we'll be doing PD next year. I've also talked to the building principals about adding some time into the schedule to build in that PD for next year for not only the Chrome boxes, but our new student information system. Um, and then Launchpad. So right now, we're using Launchpad, um, which is costing us a lot of money, and we have a free resource that we've been using for the last couple of years, and we're gonna switch over to that. Um, it's just a little bit easier, one-stop shop for all students. Um, and it has some more accessibility features for students, um, that we really like. So those are some of the things we're moving over to. Um, and then we've really taken, um, and really looked at what's going on in the world with technology and trying to help support our families about internet and social media. We know that's been a big hot topic lately, especially where students were home, um, on the internet for the last two years. Um, so we've updated our technology website, um, and I'll show you what that looks like. Um, we put together a resource page just for parents, um, and family members, so they can kind of get some resources for different things. Now, we're in a little tricky spot because most social media sites, you have to be 13. So that really only hits one grade level here. But we wanna make sure we're giving parents the options and resources that they need. So we just put together, um, some helpful tips for parents, for students, um, and then we gave them some resources for ways they could find out about social media sites. I'm gonna stop sharing for a second and reshare it, because there seems to be a glitch. Try this again. There we go. Um, some digital monitoring apps and software parents can use. Our acceptable use policy, which is found in our student handbook, as well as some other resources for parents for them to talk with their, their children about technology. Um, so these are some resources we use. These are some resources that the computer teachers or technology teachers use in our schools as well, so it kind of ties everything back together. Um, we are looking at our acceptable use policy and adapting it. Um, it's kind of outdated, so we've been working hard to try to make some changes with that as well, and we'll be bringing that to the board once the leadership team finishes looking over at that. And that's about it.
Any questions?
I think it's a really good idea to talk to parents because I know some five-year-olds that are using social media because their brothers have it.
Yeah. Yeah.
And conversations at the lunch table have been very interesting, but really not appropriate. So I'm glad you're talking to them.
Yeah, I mean, it is a hard, hard thing to navigate. I have an 11-year-old at home, and we're having those conversations, too, and I'm the technology director, and I'm still having to have those hard conversations with my 11-year-old. So it's not easy for anybody, but we did wanna just make sure that there are resources out there that parents can, can reach out to if, if need be.
Now, does, does this have anything to do with launch now? Is that something different? It's something different?
Yep, I can, I can talk about that, um, in my, under my board report. Yep. It's okay.
Thank you, Amber.
Perfect, thanks.
Mr. De Sard, facilities?
Good evening, everyone.
How are you?
I'm doing well, thank you. And yourself?
Good, thanks.
Good. We're starting to enjoy some nice weather, and we're all happy about that. There are probably a few people that aren't happy, but we have turned off the heat in the buildings, um, other than in the preschool area. Maybe save us a little money on fuel, um, and it is gonna get warmer. So I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. We are still looking for summer hires. We are looking for a few good folks that wanna join us for our summer fun here at the Hampton School District to help clean and, um, spruce the buildings up and welcome everybody back at the end of August and the beginning of September. Just like to go over a couple of different things that, um, Mariah and I have been considering and talking about, um, as the school year ends, and we are running into some hurdles. With that said, I wanted to talk about the, um, Marston School Direct Digital Control System, which we refer to as DDC. And, um, so with COVID, we've needed, we've had higher demands on our HVAC system, both at Center and Marston. We know Center's situation is going to be worked on and implemented over next summer to bring that up to, um, 2023 standards with the, um, ash ray, as long as prices don't skyrocket between now and then on materials. But COVID-19 has really tested our DDD, DDC system at Marston School. Um, we were starting to have some problems with it, I would say, in December of this year. Um, and I had an engineer look in, look at it and come up with a proposal for repair because we've had patches done to our system before. Um, with that, I'm gonna go into a little bit of a little executive summary here about that system. I know everybody's worried because it sounds expensive, and it is. Okay, um, the Marston School DDC system was installed in 1996. We often refer to that as the new wing of the building, but here again, it was 1996. Um, we've had minor upgrades over the years, and 2008, we put CO2 sensors were installed and tied into the system. We replaced it, we replaced unit ventilators. They were phased in in the mid to late 2000. This makes our system well over 20 years old. We are no longer able to access the system remotely at Marston or Center. But keep in mind, at Center, we're gonna be replacing that system with upgrades next summer. This is not because of firewalls or pass codes. Um, it is due to outdated computer programs and our Java, and Java requirements. Any attempts to fix the issues have been short-lived and non-lasting. The system has come to the end of its existing life in equipment. So this is basically, we're still on Windows 95, and I'm using that as kind of a cliche, but, because it's not Windows 95 it operates on. It's on a, um, Honeywell system with, um, an open... it's on a Honeywell system with an open resource, and nothing is proprietary so that we can, we're not going to be tied into any particular manufacturer. What we would be doing is replacing our controller, controllers, expanding module panel B, C, and D, and includes a new back net and IP controllers. Maybe we don't need to go all the way down this line, but all of these have been put out into a bid form, and we're waiting to hear back from what it's going to cost to do the upgrades. Because one of our biggest concerns is that when we have problems with the facility at Marston, we need to bring in outside, the vendor has to come out to the building to address the issue if I can't troubleshoot it on site. And the systems have been a lot more modernized with the controls are available and over the Internet and so that the newer devices would send back more information to the controller so the diagnosis is a lot more streamlined than having someone have to travel out to our facility and do a physical examination. But they can narrow down to what's not operating because they'll be getting enough signals from, you know, actuator open, actuator close, water on, you know, hot water in, hot water out. But we've really been using our system a lot with having them wide open to get a proper amount of air exchanges in all of the spaces. The CO2 sensors will be upgraded, so it's a greater logging and data collection of all the information. We are kind of stepping into the 21st century. Should we not be able to do this, we'll still be able to operate the school. Things will be fine, but we're going to have a lot more service calls and things that are nuisances for everybody. So Mariah and I have been talking, and I think she believes we have confidence in the financial support for the program based on information we've talked with, with the different parties that have been involved. And I think we wanted to bring this to your attention and also get your blessing to move forward if it fits within our financial, what I have left.
What is our financial?
What is our, where are we at? So that's what I was going to talk about.
Oh, you're going to talk about that.
So my guesstimate for the end of year, my guesstimate for the operating surplus will be between 350,000 to 400,000. However, I'll know better. Once I finish cleaning up the purchase orders in this Friday is the last Friday I'm letting all the schools put purchase orders in. So I'll know better where we'll, where our final surplus will be at. Keith is very mindful. He doesn't usually spend his budget until March, April, May. And then I'm on him at May because we really don't have a budget for emergencies. It's really maintenance. So if something really crazy happens, we have no funds. So he really holds off to do a lot of his maintenance until then. So between the maintenance that we have, the little maintenance that we have done and what he's been mindful about, we should definitely be able to handle this with still having that as a surplus.
So if I may ask a question. I know you don't have exact figures, or you either. But what are we looking at ballpark figure to fix this? We looking at $25,000, $250,000?
I think it's going to be anywhere between $75,000 and $125,000.
Okay.
Keep in mind, we're running wires from every classroom all the way back to the new controllers. Most of it's pulling wires. Anyways, that's my guesstimate from my educated rear.
So I have two other questions. We can't use the money that was voted on?
Warren article, the 300.
The Warren article.
We've utilized all that money for the items that we put in for that Warren article.
Okay. And my last question. Why didn't we know about this in October, November, December, when we were doing the budget? Because I've never heard of it.
We started looking at our issues in December.
Okay.
And I thought it was going to be like a $20,000 computer upgrade.
Okay.
I guess that's my lack of experience of not working in DDC for a livelihood to understand we were that close to the end of our lives because we have had used patches before that have kept us going.
Okay.
I apologize for that.
No? No?
Wouldn't know if something was to happen. I mean, it's like your furnace going at home.
Right.
Or your water heater going at home.
Correct.
It was unplanned. You thought you had 10 years, and it went and settled. In this situation, it went to the full length, and now it needs to be replaced. But then again, you won't know what's going on until you get somebody here because that cost number that you gave between 75 and 20, $125,000 could go up depending on what happens when they start pulling wires out of the wall. Correct?
Well, that's why I went with the higher number. Like Mariah says, maybe I'm fearful, or I'm a Yankee, or I'm cautious. I am a lazy man. I like to do things once, and I like to do them right. So like I said, if we wanted to hold off on this, we could and limp through and put it in a Warren article next year, which would mean we would be doing it in the summer of '24.
And that's going to cost you more in the long run. Because you're going to have to pay for all these service people that come in and, you know.
That's the frightening part, yes.
Yeah, that's, I mean, they could wipe us $125,000, and we'd still have to replace the thing.
So just to clarify.
Sure.
Okay. The 125 is, is a number that you've come up with that you think might be the, the highest number possibly? Okay? And the number that you gave us that we may have left over in the budget.
Mm-hmm. Our surplus.
Could accomplish that.
That would, even with this, we would have that as a surplus.
We would still have a surplus?
Yep.
Okay.
That what I gave you.
My final question is, what are you looking to get from us tonight?
I think acknowledgement and encouragement to move forward and to repair our problem.
So a board vote.
Okay. Frank?
I'd like to just propose that, you know, we're talking right now, blue sky to some degree. I think we need to get an actual number, not within, within 5% or 10%.
Okay.
Okay? What needed for work prior to the fiscal year closing to see, because you're going to need to move forward on this probably this summer, only because we don't know what's going on with the pandemic and if it slightly goes up. And you're going to need that equipment to continue to circulate and filter the air.
We have, we have our RFP out, and we're going to have a number, the 18th, it's a Thursday, it's either the 18th or 26th, whatever.
By May.
Yeah, end of May.
So if I can ask, is waiting until our next board meeting in June going to be problematic?
Yes.
It is?
Absolutely.
We're going to have to pull the trigger when we have the low number and engage them so they can procure all these microchipped laced instruments.
Okay.
I would.
Frank?
I would suggest that, I'm just looking at my calendar now, just bear with me. I would suggest that you're saying you should get some information.
I don't have it, I, I don't have the RFP in front of me, but it did have a.
Well, you said the 18th or the 20th, right?
Yeah, whatever that Thursday is.
I would suggest that we hold a meeting the week of the 23rd, and Keith can give us more information, and then we can make a determination.
Well, I don't, I don't know when we can have a meeting. Might be that day, may not be, but I'm not comfortable voting on it tonight when we, we don't really know the amount and when we don't have the final figures.
Yep.
I'm in favor of it, but.
Well, that's why I'm proposing a.
I, I know that. I know that.
So can I ask this question then? So if we're in the, under 125, I'm thinking it's going to be around $100,000. Okay? Are we, we'd like to let the parties know that we are planning to bring it to the board and that we would likely move ahead. I need to encourage the app, the bidders that it's a worthwhile process to go through.
I'm looking around, and I'm seeing nods, and I'm seeing nods. And so I think the board is, is in agreement that this is something that we'd like to do. The nuts and bolts of it, whether, when and if we're going to meet, yet to be determined.
And after this is all done, and when they're doing it, I think we need to look at all our systems and everything and for next fall, plan ahead and say, okay, well, we may have to replace this and choose one or two. Because that's better than us coming now and saying, we're going to spend $125,000 on unexpected money. Because the obvious question will be, well, where'd you get that? So, you know, I think, I think that would be good, too.
Yes.
Well, he's done an excellent job on, you know, I mean, he shut the heat off, so now we know where there's a cost savings in every building.
Exactly, but you.
Set that.
And Keith does a great job. I just see if we can maybe plan on some of this that we know might come up.
I agree.
With budgets, you know.
Well, it's very difficult. I know, I know we can keep going on this, but it's very difficult to anticipate something, as Frank said. This is an expensive system that we've been able to.
May 19.
Apply shorter Band-Aids and repairs. But Lois does, in one of her drawers, have something, an eight to $16 million improvement list.
I do.
Eight, that's a good idea.
Okay. Just to enlighten everybody.
You know, it might be not a bad idea to bring that out at budget season, at least not all of it, but some of it. And maybe there's something on there that we could get in or something.
Well, you know, it wouldn't be out of the, out of question to have a contingency fund set up.
Right.
For maintenance.
Yep.
To look at these problems, and if it's not utilized, it just goes back to the voters at the end of the session, you know?
Yeah, that's, you'd have to get that approved at, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, because it takes care of these emergency situations that occur between Marston and Center, because those are the two oldest buildings in our system.
So I'm hearing that we need to have a, a short board meeting.
A short.
To finalize this. I'm going to be away all next week.
Well, no, we couldn't do it next week. It has to be after, because he's meeting the 18th, 19th.
So the week of the 23rd?
Yes.
The week of the 23rd we're looking at.
Yeah.
Correct.
He's going to get his calendar.
Wait a minute. I would.
Well, we, we have to wait for him, Frank.
Yeah, no, no, I'm looking at calendars. How about the 26th? I'm going to make a proposal.
Well, we got to wait for him.
Yeah, I'll wait for him to come back, but that's from, would the 26th work for you? Thursday.
Try for the 26th.
Okay. So guys, what's on the 26th?
I'm sorry, Ken?
Is there information about?
Oh, here in the, oh, in the cafeteria? Well, okay.
We, we can find a place to, to meet for a brief.
Do you even get the SAU? Want to do the SAU?
Yeah, we could use the SAU, I'm sure.
Or maybe the library or.
Let's, let's do that tentatively, and then I can.
What, what time you thinking?
Well, either the 25th or the 26th, that should work. That should give you plenty of time.
Mm-hmm.
Will you tell us, Keith?
How about the 25th?
Yeah, 25th is good for me.
Yeah, 25th is better for me.
Okay.
It's better for me, too. I'll be in Florida coming back on the 24th.
I'm trying to find the RFP, but of course, the machines don't work when you want them to.
The poor craftsman.
Does anyone else ever have that problem?
It's the poor craftsman who blames his tools.
It is, but I do bring a pencil to school.
Keith, I think that covered, we'll have our RFPs by then.
Yeah. Did you find, did you find?
No, but I'm pretty sure we did it by.
Yeah, we could do six, that would be.
25th?
I have the rec meeting at 6:30. 25th, Wednesday night.
25th, about what time? 6 o'clock?
6 o'clock. And we'll let you know the location once we figure it out.
Location TBD.
I think that's a Thursday, right?
That's a Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday.
Okay.
Yeah. So we'll just have to make sure Kathy sends out.
Ken, you have anything on the 25th here that you know of? Okay, so we may be able to have it right here.
All right. Can we go to the community room? We can.
Well, they don't have anything, so we could.
It's all good.
Okay.
Okay, well, thank you.
Yes. So I have a few other things?
Yeah.
One spin, one more.
Not, not if it's going to cost us $125,000 more.
Well, I think these are all things that have been funded, but I just want you to know that we're working on them. That last proposal does not bring me any pleasure to bring the board any shocks or anything that makes folks unaware of any anticipated events. With that said, summer projects, we're going to continue with the lighting upgrades at Center and Marston. We're doing floor repairs at Center School. We have the elevator being replaced at Center School. Drainage upgrades at Center School. We are fixing the entrance stairs at Center School. Everything's at Center School, Tim. The SAU airlock. We talked about the DDC upgrades and just routine cleaning around the buildings. And also, we need a few good summer hires out there, everybody. You can call the SAU at 603-926-4560 and get an application. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. Frank?
Just one quick question for you. Regarding the cleaning, sanitizing of the building, that is still continuing, correct?
Yes, sir. But I would like everybody at home to know that we have always been cleaning for health and safety. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Appreciate your support.
Okay, we'll see you on the 25th, if not before. Dr. Costa?
So just, just a couple of things to highlight in my, my report. As Mrs. Levine spoke about, we are looking at Alma, replacing our power school as our new student information system, which is pretty exciting. It has been, and it's a New Hampshire-based company. It's endorsed by a number of New Hampshire organizations. I know that we've talked about the report card, specifically at Hampton Academy, has been really challenging to work with. We believe that it should be fairly seamless to make that transition, but we are working with the staff, and we'll make sure that we adequately prepare and plan for this so that Hampton Academy, which is most impacted by this, will be ready. So I know that Mrs. Levine is working with Alma on trainings for leadership, our school administrators, secretaries, all of them, so that we're ready to roll this out in the Just as, as school years wind down, as the principals share, they are working on these final milestone events, including the final assemblies. We have a lot going on, as they shared in their reports, just many dates to keep track of. Moving on to some other things, just that we've had some great committee meetings, we've had our wellness team meet, our professional development team meet. We are concluding our work with Mike Anderson next year. I know that Mr. Hocken. I know that Mr. Hawkins and Mrs. Hughes are looking at bringing in potentially the Brown Center to help with advisory. That's going to be one of the big goals for next year as we continue to focus on social emotional learning. So that will be just a great way to utilize this wonderful organization that's just up the road at U&amp;H that we've been sending our students to, but to have them come in and actually to carry that training into our Hampton Academy will be just fantastic. And then, of course, Launch Now, Andrea, that you brought up. So Launch Now is this new platform that's designed to support career pathways for middle school students. I know that it's also being looked at at Winnicott High School as well. What Launch Now is, is it's an app that allows our students to interface with potential community service learning projects that might help them to start thinking about their career pathways. Just another area that middle schools and need to do a better job with as we think about our students that go on to Winnicott High School and they have to start thinking about career pathways. We know that middle school is that time when students start to think about what they want to be once they move on after high school. So this app actually is something that interfaces with parents, teachers, students. So they're, they're actually building like a little portfolio with opportunities and experiences. The, the wonderful thing is that it's actually free. It's free to students, it's free to districts, and that it's really driven by community partnerships. So we're excited about this and it's, again, a nice compliment to what Hampton Academy is always, it's already doing relative to career pathways. So more information will be coming about that. We were able to certify all staff over April break, so we're excited to see that staff has done a phenomenal job accumulating those professional development hours. I can tell you that although they're only required to do basically 30 per content area and then 45 overall, our staff does tremendous hours. Like, they submit hundreds of hours well above what's required and I think it's just a testament to the commitment, the dedication, and the work that they do to always try to better themselves in support of our students. So really easy to do that and principals and the PD committee does a great job helping out with that. And I know that my learning plan is just a big help because it helps to organize those hours and makes it really easy for me to go into the state system and to do that. But kudos to everybody for making that be such a very easy, successful process. So thank you for that. Obviously, we are preparing for summer programming this July. We're excited to be able to do that. We know that principals are reaching out to students and families to see what the interest is on that. I know that Andrea, you talked a little bit about demonstrated success. We will have our final meeting date on May 25th. The goal of this year is to have a vertically and horizontally aligned language arts curriculum with ICANN statements and we are working through that. And then next year, we would look at curriculum, materials, and assessments as it pertains to our students, so, and assuring that report cards are all aligned. So just a nice opportunity to refreshen our curriculum, language arts curriculum. And we know that students have started New Hampshire SAS testing. I did have a chance to visit today at Hampton Academy and I know that they had their first day today and they felt really positive about it. They took the math portion and I would say that overall, the students felt very positive about it, the staff felt very positive about it. They'll have their second math assessment on Thursday, so it's nicely paced out and spaced out so that students are not overloaded and that they can have the stamina that they need to perform at their best. And I know that I spoke with teachers and staff at Marston School and they felt pretty positive in terms of seeing some really nice growth.
Well, I had the opportunity to be with some fifth graders as they were doing their science and this, they were, they had, they were able to sustain for the, for the hour really well. I was very impressed with that. I'd have to say the science was very complicated.
Yep.
There were five or six steps that had to be done for almost every single question. And although they were able to sustain their focus for that amount of time, I'm not sure if they knew how to, like, go back. Like, they would, they would see information and, and then they would move on. And my observation was that they didn't really know how to go back and put the pieces together. So I was a little concerned about that, but, I mean, they stayed focused. They really did. They did a good job on that, but they were very complicated questions.
Probably to, like Trish Crowley's point, those 25 words, we know, like, analysis, synthesis, summarize. Those, those are really hard for kids. If you think about Bloom's taxonomy, that is definitely higher level thinking and for some, for some students, that just is really challenging for them. And so, again, it's one point of data, but it's important data. So obviously, we look at that data and we move from there.
Right.
So, but, yeah, thanks for, thanks for sharing that. You're absolutely right. It's, it's rigorous, to say the least.
Very much, yeah.
Right? And then, of course, our students will participate in their STAR assessments and other end-of-the-year assessments. So we do have multiple points of data that we can look at to determine how students are doing and we'll, we'll be doing that. This Thursday night, our PTA will meet with New Hampshire Listens as we continue those conversations. We're looking forward to that. And then on the 18th, the leadership team will be also meeting with New Hampshire Listens to, again, to continue our conversation about how equity impacts our student wellness, access to learning, and of course, student progress. Just a couple of other things to note. Obviously, we have a big field trip coming up to Quebec that our students are looking forward to, to attending. I'm going to have the pleasure of accompanying those eighth graders, so I'm really excited about doing that, something that I have not had the pleasure of doing, but you know me, I'm, I'm, I'm just thrilled to be able to do that with those eighth graders and I'm, it's just an honor to do that. Nicole Wilcox is just amazing in terms of her level of detail and planning and everything that's going into all of that, so kudos to her. I know it's going to be a great trip. We're looking forward to that. And just all of the eighth grade final assembly that's going to come up and our fifth grade farewell and our grade two, three step-up day. So just lots of great things that are happening for our children and our staff and schools as we wind down the year. And we just really appreciate the support from the community with teacher appreciation, the support from the board, and just getting our families back into our schools to be able to share all the wonderful things that are happening. So thanks, we thank them for coming to our coffee chats and we thank them for supporting the PTA event at the Brook, which was, again, a wonderful evening and just kudos to Jim McClellan and the PTA for, for doing that because I know that that took a lot of work as well. So that's it. Do you have any questions for me?
Frank?
Yeah, going back to your point, bullet point under goal number three, STAR assessments.
Yes.
Is that on a monthly basis, quarterly basis, or at the end of the year?
It's trimesters. So we, we administer it in the fall and then we do in the winter, kind of a mid-year check to see, and then we do it again in the spring. We also have the ability to do some probing and dip, sticking. I know Nathan, Mr. Sandler, are we still doing that for some students?
Yeah, we, we monitor our. Or do teachers have the.
Yep.
So basically, you get the results three times a year?
We do.
Okay, so then if we, based on the last one we had, where we had math down at 33, 30, English down.
Yeah, that was New Hampshire SAS.
Would you get a better feel if we're presented with these STAR assessments evaluations on a quarterly basis beginning next year?
So we do it on a trimester basis and if, you know, absolutely, we're, we're, we are happy to report or share out with that, but keep in mind, it is one point of data, just has New Hampshire SAS as one point of data. The data supposedly does align with New Hampshire SAS, so it is a good indicator, but it's also progress monitoring. We like to look at things from, you know, fall to fall or fall to spring, just to see the, the growth and progress that students are making. But keep in mind, we would never want to judge anyone on one point of data. We really, as a team, in fact, through RTI, what we've always done is we look at a number of data points. So we're looking at the New Hampshire SAS, that's important. We look at the STAR, but we also look at some of those other, what we call formative assessments. So, so those are the things that the students do on a daily basis. You know, we, what you'll often hear is triangulation is really key to making any kind of assumptions about kids and progress. So we really want to make sure that we're looking at three points of data. You want to look at what does the daily progress look like? And then, of course, what does cumulative progress look like relative to where they've been? So I just caution you that to look at one point of data in isolation, I don't think it tells the whole story. I think that just as, as a former principal, we never look at any one point of data in isolation. It's just not fair to kids to judge them on, on one point because anyone can have a great day, but anyone can have a bad day. So I do.
No, you're looking at three months, but that's, gives you a benchmark to see where you need to improve the program or where the program is lacking.
Yep.
And you may, so that's what I'm getting at. I'm not looking at the individual child.
Right.
I'm looking at the overall progress of, of the group.
Right.
With individual children and we can fine tune that as we go along, so at the end of the program, you should have had some type of increase in the ability because you basically looked at it on a quarterly or trimesterly basis.
Right.
To improve the program. And if you're lacking in some areas, then you can address it sooner rather than later so the child develops better.
You're, you're 100% right. In fact, every single principal over there has what we call a response to intervention model, an RTI model, and that's the whole purpose of that. And the purpose of response to intervention is not waiting for kids to fail, but every six weeks, we are checking and monitoring our students and their progress. So, so if we see that a child needs more support in reading or math or whatever it might be, we're giving that support, whether it be through Target Assist, Title I, differentiation, it could come through a number of ways. But then what we're doing is in six weeks, we're re-looking at that same child to say, is what we're doing working? That's the question, right, that we're asking ourselves? And how we can tell if it's working is, are what does the child's work look like? What does it look like on a STAR? Maybe we're doing another STAR probe, right? Maybe we're doing, you know, whatever assessment it might be. But it's information that we have, you know, I think it's just what, what you want to see and what we want to share out.
Well, based on the last report, it was a group, right? It wasn't an individual child that was 33.
What we.
The segment, correct?
Right. This was a year ago, math.
So if we look at the segment.
Right.
All right, and fine tune that as we move on, it, it's basically benefits all children within that concept.
Right. And we, and that was the New Hampshire SAS, which they are taking now. So if you want to compare apples to apples, we could definitely look at the New Hampshire SAS results when we get them back, but if you want to compare STAR from fall to spring, that's something else that we can do. So you just, your choice.
Okay, so you don't have a problem if we look at this on a six-week or 12-week basis?
I, I would just caution you that six weeks, because remember, kids go like this.
Well, you said quarterly, right?
Um, trimesters.
Trimesters.
Yeah.
So let's do it on a trimester basis and if we have to fine tune, I mean, I'm just suggesting it. So we can catch it sooner rather than later?
Again, I, I would say that data only tells one side of the story. You just, I, I hear where you're, where you're coming from, but you, in all, in all fairness, right, that data point that you saw was based on kids not having instruction for two years. That is, was an anomaly for this district, I would say. I mean, you all have been on this board for long, for a long time. We, we all would say that was not our best work. It wouldn't be. Kids didn't have the exposure to the academics that they would have had if it weren't for COVID-19. I, I just caution you because we talk about job satisfaction and teacher satisfaction and the joy in the, in the work that we do. You start doing that and what it really says is, you know what? We don't trust that our teachers are doing the work to impact our kids' progress. Therefore, we want to see these results every trimester. You, we have to, it's, we're, well, I just think you got to be careful about the message you're sending.
I disagree with you, though. I disagree with you entirely. Now you're, you're putting it on the, on the instructor. I'm saying it's a benchmark. It's a benchmark and if we need to change gears on that benchmark on a, once every trimester than, I, I think you should be coming to the board and say, okay, we have a shortfall here, we're going to approach it in this manner and, and we're going to take it and see if that works, okay? And if we need to put more money towards that or we need to make some minor adjustments that you're going to bring forward, that's fine. But that, that way, it improves the district's standing on critical areas like English and math. And I, it's an individual thing.
Frank, do you have a motion you'd like to make?
I didn't motion it, I just suggested it and I, I've just thrown it out for the board to look at. I, do you have anything to say?
I think Wendy's got her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Wendy.
No, no, it's fine. I just, I think Lois's point is that that's micro-managing, that, that, we want to look at stuff from the high level.
Yep.
Right, as a board. So she's saying the instructors are looking at this basically day-to-day. The principals are doing RTI, so they're looking at it every six weeks.
Yes.
That's all being rolled up to Lois.
Yep.
If they need more resources, they come to us and ask us for them. That us, I think Lois was trying to say that if we look at this one specific thing, it's not going to give us what you're asking for.
No.
So you're asking for three times a year to have a benchmark, right? But it's a benchmark of one single test.
Yeah.
So it doesn't give us the SAS tests. It doesn't give us all of the other sort of day-to-day things that they're doing in the classrooms. And so it doesn't give us actually a good benchmark.
Right.
It's a random number.
But then you get one number at the end of the year and if it comes out to 44, okay, those kids lose out, they've moved on, okay, to the high school, and we haven't addressed that issue, but we'll address it for the people coming up.
But that's not what we're doing.
That's, that's shortchanging.
That's what, that's what our administrators are doing. Our administrators are the ones who are.
I don't think it's micro-managing, though.
No, I disagree.
I think it's just looking at it and if there's a way to improve it, we can improve it.
We've always done, we've always given you New Hampshire SAS data information. We could give you STAR assessment data. That, that's absolutely, we do do that, but if you do that, I would say you should really be, you should really look at growth, right? We should really be looking at growth. Where do they start? Where do they end? You could look at SAS from one year to the next and you could look at cohorts. That's really what you want to look at. You start looking at every six weeks or every trimester, it does. It get, to me, it, kids are like, it's very fluid. Kids learn in different ways, different times, different rates. I wouldn't hang my hat on a winter-normed STAR. I wouldn't. And not only that, it's just one point of data.
Okay, Frank, I think your point is understood. Any other questions for Lois?
I, just one quick thing. On this Launch Now, you had said the kids can build a portfolio. Is this something that could be introduced in like computer class during, like at the beginning of the school year or whatever?
We haven't gotten that far, but yes.
Yes, yes, it could. Yes. Yep.
I mean, because it's a very good resource, but I would love to see it really get in, and kids seem to understand it better if it's introduced in school first.
Absolutely. And we would, it would be through advisory or it would be, yeah.
That's what I was thinking, through advisory.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, moving on. You have the enrollment sheet in your packet. Any questions on that? Comments? Okay. Exit interviews?
Just that we are scheduling those exit interviews. We have an opportunity to talk with anybody who's leaving our district, just to get some insight. So I am doing those as well as trying to discollect some information.
And summatives?
Same thing. I meet with all of the leadership team to talk about their goals, to talk about highlights of the year, challenges of the year, professional development, thinking for next year, and how I can support their professional development needs. I do that with everybody on the leadership team. The assistant principals do it with their principals. So just to kind of get a sense of their goals for the year, I do it with Mary Borg, I do it with Keith Lassard, I'll do it with Mariah Curtis tomorrow, and I've already had an opportunity to meet with Mrs. Levine already. And Mr. Hawkins and I also met today too. So we're just getting through them, and we'll get through all of them. And that'll become, you know, just something to add to their personnel file. This is our way of making sure that we're doing our due diligence with supervision and evaluation.
Mariah, monthly financials?
Yep. So as I discussed, our surplus is looking between 350 to 400.
And where's that coming from?
Most of it's coming from cat aid. And, but I will be cleaning up purchase orders. We're working on that now. Last purchase orders will be put in the system by Friday. So that's just a guesstimate. I don't have Mary here. However, this is about the time that we would discuss hot lunch for next year. And Mary and I discussed this, and we really don't have a tool. The tool that they, the state usually gives us, we don't have enough data to put in this tool to figure out where we are for hot lunch money. Of course, we know that costs are rising and everything's rising, and that we probably should put our rates up. They're a little bit lower than other districts. But Mary and I thought that we should keep it as is for next year and kind of really get some real data since all kids do not eat free next year.
Can I ask, can I ask, what were students paying for breakfast than for lunch before the pandemic?
$3.10 for lunch and $1.50 for breakfast.
$1.50?
Yep.
Okay. So if that's to change, that will come before the board?
Right. And we're suggesting not to change that next year.
Got it? Sorry?
Yep. Apparently President Biden is worried about inflation and the effects it's having on families. So hopefully President Biden will either give us some money towards or keep the program going. Because I think it's really, at this point, we're not going to know how that's going to affect us because there's going to be a lot of families that aren't going to pay for lunch because they can't. And they're not going to admit they do either. So there's going to be kids going without lunch or going without breakfast, and no one's going to say anything because you don't say that. You just go without and you eat at home. So, you know, I think that we got to keep a tab on this. If we do have, go back to paying for lunch and breakfast, how our numbers have decreased and see what happens.
And we definitely still want every student to fill out the free and reduced form.
And nobody sees that but Mary, right?
Nobody sees that but Mary.
So please fill it out.
And it helps that that is what, the data for that gives us Title I funds to help tutors, to fund our tutors.
And if you're having a problem at home, speak up to somebody in the school. Because I don't know a family that I have come in contact with that isn't having some sort of struggle right now. So please say something if you're having a struggle. You have social workers, you can call Lois, you can call Mariah, and you can call the principals.
Emily Buckin, Emily Buckin, our outreach worker, has got great resources. She can help to, help parents to access different resources. She is housed at the Academy at 926-2000. Wonderful resource and can assist with any families that need any kinds of resources. So she's fabulous. Emily Buckin.
And I know Gather.
Fixler. Fixler, that's right.
Now Fixler. Thank you, Andrea, I said it too. Thank you.
Gather is also going to do their program at Center School this year where they give free fruits and vegetables and menus for families. Last year, so they're going to do that. So take advantage of that too. You don't have to say anything to anyone, you just go up and get it.
And also on food service note, myself and Dave Hansberry are working with Mary to update her system because it no longer holds support. So we're updating that. The poor technology department, I've got them going crazy with food service. And they're also helping myself because I am working on updating time and entry and subtracting on my system. So it'll be a very busy summer with technology.
Are you really predicting $149,000 surplus in the hot lunch program, really?
That is what it is as of yet, yes. I'm, I don't, it's, yes.
It doesn't matter.
It's because they're.
That's part of the books.
Yes. And we can, we can keep it on in the.
I've seen it the other way.
We certainly have.
Many times, yes.
Wow.
Well, there was a couple of reasons for that. We changed Mary's salary out of food service. So now it's in our general fund, so no longer that expense. And they are paying us full breakfast and lunch for all students at a different cost than what we would get for what we, what we normally would charge. So it's a different rate.
Can you tell the board what you're doing with some of that money?
We, I have not talked to Mary about that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
The staff development that they're going on?
Oh, yes.
They're doing that.
Yeah.
Conference. Conference in June. And they're all working on getting certified and, yes, PD for, for food service, I think it's great.
They are, they are so excited. And it's really nice to see all that department excited.
Yes, and they haven't done anything like that in a while, so it's, it's great for them.
And it's a nice perk for that group, right? So I'm really excited that they're going to have an opportunity to do some professional development and really bring some teaming and camaraderie. So I'm thrilled that Mary is going to do that. So, yeah.
I'm sure they'll bring a lot back.
Okay. I just passed out to you folks a nomination. And Dr. Costa?
Yep. Is this?
Can we move these nominations? I'd like to talk to some of them in non-public. I don't want to take a vote at the present time.
All right.
Do we have any resignations?
Yes, we do. You're getting them right now.
Yep. I'm going to send them. Thank you.
Mariah?
The pastor's standing?
You're going to get that next. Okay, so we have a resignation from Michaela Moran, Center School. She's moving to Austin, Texas. Someone want to make a motion to accept that resignation?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept this resignation with deep regret.
Moved, Frank? Seconded? Ginny? Any discussion? All those in favor?
One more.
Do you have one? Okay, we have a resignation from Kathleen Hopper, Assistant Principal at Marston School. She is going to go elsewhere?
I would move that we accept Kathleen Hopper's resignation with regret, but wish her a lot of luck.
Okay. Second? Frank? All those in favor? And good luck.
Yes. You want this one? I'll give you one.
Okay.
So what is the plan on this resignation that we just?
It's been advertised, I believe.
Yep. It was anticipated. So we did post for it last Thursday, and it has 10 days to, and then we can act on it. And that's what we will do. Yep. Mr. Sadler and his team is coming together to make some next steps, and we're already getting some good applicants.
I'd like to discuss that in non-public too.
Okay. All righty.
Okay. You should have either attached to your packet or in your packet, a, the evaluation of the superintendent. It's something that we do every year. So I'm hoping that folks can get it done and get it back to me before or at the June board meeting. And for the comment part, it might be good, and I don't know if you can help us on this one. It might be good if people can just type their comments so that it's a little more anonymous. Does that make sense? And I can cut and paste them into one big document or?
Email them to you?
Yeah, that would be, that would.
Can you help? I can do a Google Doc or whatever.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah. So we'll try to put this into a Google Doc and people can get them back to me. Ginny, concerns?
Wait, you're going to what? You're going to put this on the computer?
Yes, I will, I will, I will come and help you. How's that?
I can do that.
She can help me.
You send me the document, I can do it, but.
She can help me afterwards.
Then I think we probably should gather and talk about it.
Well, I got a comment.
Hold on, hold on.
The board should talk about what they're sending to Lois. Because we won't, we'll only see us as individual. I think we need to talk about the bigger picture.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
So if we have it done in, if we, if we have it into me in June, I, I can try to get it all collated and ready for a July meeting if we have a July meeting, if not August.
So she'd be sending that, would you be sending that evaluation on a computer that we could write on?
Yeah.
Yes, hopefully.
Yep, I'll try to.
And type.
Yep.
Okay.
Mariah's available for help hours from.
After, after-school help. Okay, and we have some policies.
Lois will kind of walk us through them.
Yes.
Because it's the second read on these. Kind of give the highlights.
Highlights. Highlights, highlights, yes, here we go.
So page 65 is where they start.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
65.
The first one is IHBAA determining a specific learning disability. So in December, I reached out to the attorney because these came to light as needing review. So I reached out to him, he gave me some information. And as you were just talking about RTI earlier in the meeting, that's what this policy is about. It actually allows us to use the RTI process when we are looking for, moving towards identification. The old policy didn't allow that. It just had the old language of showing a pattern of strengths and weaknesses. So the little word "and" right there, in the middle of the paragraph, right after the blue, that's what we added. All that new stuff is all about the ability to use RTI. Before we jump to special ed identification because there's a weakness, we first have to go through the RTI process. So that's what this policy is about. And RTI process came to New Hampshire in June of 2009 after an 18-month study. And they came out with guidelines and school systems were slowly and are still slowly adapting the process. It's tiered interventions where we have to help kids. We intervene, we do things with them, we help them become better skilled than whatever their deficits are. And then if that doesn't work, we move to special ed identification or, or testing and then see if they're eligible.
So, so this is second read?
Yep.
Can I get a motion? Moved, Wendy, to accept?
Yes.
Seconded, Frank? Discussion? All those in favor? Okay.
The next one, IHBAA-R is a regulation that goes with that policy. It's determining the specific learning disability. And this is the checklist that we have to use when we are determining if a child is eligible or not. And the key here is num, is on page 68, number three. It gives you the or, it gives us the or, so that we can again use that RTI as part of our eligibility determination. The old checklist didn't have that or statement. It just had the, does a student exhibit a pattern of strengths and weaknesses? So that's just a regulation. I don't know if you vote on regulations or not. It goes with the policy.
Can I get a motion to accept this? This is the second read. Andrea? Seconded, Ginny?
Okeydokey.
Discussion? All those in favor?
The next one's on page 73. It's IHB, it's developmental delay. This is not a required policy, but it is recommended by our attorney. If we want to use the category of developmental delay, which we do use it in our district, we did need, we do need to have a policy that explains what a developmental delay is. So he gave me this policy, and I really suggest that we implement it. It allows us to identify children of at least three years old or less than 10 years old to just label them developmental delay, which just means we're still not exactly sure what the issues are, but there are some issues. And after they turn 10, we have to be more specific and say if it's a learning disability or a, you know, ADHD or whatever, whatever it is, we have to be more detailed after age 10. So that's all that this policy does. It allows us to use the category of developmental delay. Yeah. And then, I'll stop there.
Can we get a motion to accept? Frank? Seconded? Ginny? Discussion?
Yeah.
Andrea?
I guess I'm, so with those students that are identified with developmental delay, they would be getting special ed services?
Yes. Yep, the same as any other child.
And how much will that increase the number of students?
It's not going to increase at all. This is what we, we do this all the time. We've been doing this for years. It's just that we did not have a policy that allowed, that said we could do it, we were just doing it.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? All those in favor? Okay.
And that, but that's a good question, Andrea. The next one is the deliberation form that goes with that policy. Same thing, we have to deliberate and say, does the child meet all those criteria? And this is the form that we use when we are looking to see if a child meets that criteria. IHBAB.
Motion to accept? Wendy? Seconded? Frank? All those in favor? Okay.
Thank you. What about? 77.
There's one more.
Yeah, there's one more.
There's one. Lois, there's one more.
Page 77.
Yep. IHBAB.
Which is establishing criteria for special ed evaluations.
That's the one we just did.
IHBAB.
Form.
Yeah, IHBAB was the one you just did.
Yeah, but we didn't do EFA.
No, you're right, you're right, you're right. Thank you. Well, this is an important one, sorry. So this is, any parent who is frustrated or doesn't like our evaluation results is allowed to ask for an independent education evaluation, an IEE. It's very frustrating because then we have to, they go out and they get to pick an evaluator to evaluate their child. So sometimes they want an ivory tower evaluation from Boston Children's. And if they go down to Boston, they'll do a one-day wonder. They, the evaluators don't even talk to us, they don't observe the child. It's not, it's not good. So our attorney suggested that we put this policy in place to discourage people from going out to get that ivory tower evaluation that doesn't even talk to us. from going out to get that ivory tower evaluation that doesn't even talk to us. So it imposes criteria that is stricter than state and federal law. And the, these criteria, they're, they're not out of the world. We just want them to comply with federal regulations. We want it to be conducted in New Hampshire. If they can find an evaluator in New Hampshire, we would, we would like that to be. If not, see, you can also, unique circumstances may justify deviation from the criteria. So that statement is in there. Also, when there is an IEE, I have to work with the family to agree on the evaluator. So that's why this criteria is really helpful. So now I can just, when they ask for the IEE, I'll just hand them this policy and say, here's our criteria when you're choosing your evaluator. And then when you come back, we write a contract for the evaluator, and then they do the evaluation. These evaluations, by the way, cost anywhere from $4,000 to $6,000 per child. So the criteria is going to be very helpful. It also says on the second page that we want them to observe the child and at least have a conversation with the people in the school system who know the child. So I like that part of it. And then also says we're not going to pay them until we get their report. So it just sets criteria for the, for the independent evaluators.
This doesn't restrict the parent from still wanting to go to Boston, though, does it?
No. Well, no, but we, I mean, that's going to have to be a conversation. Just let, let's talk about why, you know, why there's nobody in New Hampshire that'll fit that criteria, and what's, what's Boston going to do for us. And also, will the Boston people at least have a conversation with the staff in the school system?
Well, I, I, the only reason I brought it up is if I'm having a heart attack and I go to Portsmouth, I think I'd rather go down to Mass General.
I, I completely understand. And, and that's why that statement...
Poor analogy, but...
Well...
Lois, do we have a, do we have a general idea of how many, what do you call them, IEEs are in the seacoast area?
Yeah. Well, you mean evaluators?
Yes.
That's the next thing on my list. I need to get a list of them. And I have, I've, I've reached out to all my special ed directors and asked them for, you know, names of specific people in the area. If I were to guess, it would be less than nine.
So is it? I guess so. My question is, are parents going out of state? Because it's hard to find someone. We're a sort of small area, and I worry about restricting that, particularly as the state is becoming, there's, there's going to be the new, was it Ahm Spudman this year? The state is starting to pay a little more attention to special ed and to sort of the rights of parents, particularly in the special ed process. And I just think we need to be mindful of that.
I think that this allows for that. It just puts some guidelines in, and it was recommended by our attorney, Jerry Zelen, who is a special ed attorney. Phenomenal.
Yeah, very good special ed.
Special education with Drummond and Winsome. They're putting this there again as safeguards. We're not saying they can't. We're just saying that it shall not exceed the usual and customary rate, and that we obviously need to get the report, and that we, the evaluator must review the relevant educational records. I think we're just trying to put some safeguards in place that really protect the district and put some parameters around it. And I don't think that's necessarily a bad thing. I do think it's, was recommended by our attorney.
Yeah.
And again, I think it's just recommendations. We, we have this. It does happen.
Yes.
We don't deny it. We just want to put some safeguards in place around it. You don't want to be paying for something that you don't get. This ensures that we're going to get the report before we pay for it. I just think there's some, there's some just good guidelines here.
Well, I think we should be getting the report before we pay for it. Why chase it for 10 minutes?
Right. Yeah.
Right.
Just some good guidelines.
Can we get a motion to accept this policy?
I'll give you the motion.
Frank, second. Andrea, discussion. All in favor? Thank you. I think that's the last one.
That is the last one. That was an important one. Thank you.
And we have one more as a board. DFA, the investment. This is a second read?
Yes, it is.
It's a second read. And this is required by law. Andrea, motion to accept?
Sure.
Thank you. Ginny, second. Discussion. All those in favor? 500.
Can we look at two policies on the next board meeting? One on, on address code. I know we touched on it, but I'd like to bring it back up to...
We do have a new, a new policy. We approved it.
You have.
We just approved it as a board.
Yeah, can we go back and look at it? Do you have a problem with that, or?
No, I just, you, you voted for it in favor of it, I think, last month.
Yeah, I know.
Okay. So we've got a policy committee meeting. Is there something you want us to discuss in the meeting about it, or we just want to do it here? It's fine. I'm not, I'm not arguing about it.
No, I know that. I, I just think that, I, I noticed, okay, just let me rephrase it. Maybe you addressed it, because I can't remember what I had for supper three weeks ago. But, you know, I'm looking at other school districts in our, on the coast that allow their staff to wear jeans, you know, dress jeans. Let me rephrase that, not with ribs, not with...
I'm just, I'm just going to stop. If, if you want to revisit this policy.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll do that.
Okay.
And we'll have this discussion. We'll have this discussion when we revisit the policy. We don't have to have it twice. So we'll take a look at the next board meeting at that policy.
I'll add it. I have it. I'll put it. Okay. We'll do it. Okay.
Okay. All right. We have minutes of April 12. Anybody want to make a motion on those? Andrea, moved? Seconded? Ginny, discussion? Those are the... That's all of them on the 12th. All those in favor? Andrea? Okay. 500. Did we not have non-public on the 12?
It's on the back, is it?
It is on the back.
Okay.
There it is. It was hiding from us. And we have a, a, a non-public. Anyone want to make a motion to accept those from the 12?
Yes.
Ginny? Seconded Wendy?
Super terrific, Mariah.
All those in favor? Okay, so we have done that. Now, I, I think I missed more nominations.
No.
They want to do them all in non-public.
Oh, okey-dokey.
Yep, we'll do them all in non-public.
All right. Well, we'll have to come out of our public.
Exactly. Right, but we'll have the discussion.
So I would accept a motion to go into non-public under, I guess it's 91A3, Roman numeral 2A.
Yep, personal.
Roll call? Or no, a motion? Second the emotion? Frank, you seconded the motion. Roll call?
Yes.
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 And yes. So we're going into non-public. Okay, we got back in public session at 8:36. We have some nominations. Dr. Costa?
Yep, thank you. So starting at Hampton Academy, I'd like to bring Ken Hawkins to your attention to nominate him for the principal of Hampton Academy.
Can I get a motion? Moved Frank to accept. Seconded Wendy. Discussion. All those in
Okay. And at Marston School, we have Samantha Cohen replacing Case Manager Courtney Sellers.
Moved Ginny. Seconded Andrea. Seconded? Seconded? All those in favor?
Hannah Lazaric replacing Ray Needison at Marston School.
Seconded Wendy. There it is. Discussion. All those in favor?
Lauren Pete replacing Lonnie Stebbins, who is moving to a STEAM position.
Moved Wendy?
Yes.
Seconded Ginny. Discussion. All those in favor?
Andrea Smith, who is replacing Michelle Crotto for retirement.
Moved Frank. Seconded Ginny. Discussion. All those in favor?
And Caitlin Wright, who is replacing Michelle Philpott as the occupational therapist.
Motion? Wendy, second Frank. Discussion. All those in favor?
That's it?
Can I, I have one thing, real quick. I, I just, I've been thinking about this since Frank mentioned it, about the test scores. I'm not a, a big fan of the essay, the SAS ones. I just, after seeing those science ones, it just kind of bothered me a lot. And then when Frank brought up about seeing scores, it made me think more about, if we were going to do something like Frank was talking about, I think it should be, and again, to your point, it's only one data point, but I think it should be more of the STAR assessments, because I think those give us a better indicator than the SAS does.
We, we are happy to do that. I mean, I certainly don't want you to feel that I don't want to keep you informed of where our students are progressing. I would be happy, and we have always presented the New Hampshire SAS scores to you, right? Those scores become very public. They are used to really, for programming, for budgets, for, right, making decisions. I, I, I respect that. Happy to do that, and I'm happy to provide an overview of the STAR assessments. And Principal Lannan can give us some overviews on his assessments at the pre-K grade two, because we know that they don't always use the STAR assessments. We're happy to do that. We'd be willing to do that in July. Maybe we meet in July or August. We can kind of let you take a peek at, from September to June, so you can get a sense of how we did. And then when we get those, yep, the STARS.
With the STAR.
Yep. And then we can look at the SAS scores as soon as we get those, and we're happy to share those out with you.
Well, if I, if I may, why don't you have that discussion with your leadership team? You know, they should be making the, they should be making the decision, not us. How many times kids are tested?
And I wasn't talking about how many times necessarily. I was just talking about which would be maybe more, I'm not even going to say appropriate, but which would be more meaningful for us. And I think the STAR scores might be more meaningful for us as a board, because it's more of a reflection.
Well, I know how disruptive testing can be. You, you're losing days of instruction.
But the STAR isn't...
Well, they'll discuss that with their leadership.
And it also becomes personal for teachers.
Yeah.
It becomes very personal.
Would it make sense to do it in August? I'm thinking if I give this to them in July, they may not be too happy with me. Would you like to do it in, would, would August be okay?
No, that's fine.
All right. Perfect.
Thank you.
Yep.
To do that.
We've adjourned.
Someone was, had made a motion, I think. We didn't get a second.
I first.
You made a motion to...
Adjourn.
Adjourn. Lost my train of thought for a minute. Did we get a second? Wendy, I'm sorry. Discussion. All those in favor? We are adjourned.